Special council meeting for October twentieth to order. And the first item we have is the adoption of the agenda. So a recommendation here that the agenda for the October twentieth, twenty twenty one special meeting of council be accepted and passed. Could I get a mover and a second for that please? Move by Steve, seconded by Sherry. All those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest on anything on today's agenda? I have none to disclose. Steve?
Done, Andy.
Okay, thanks. Lisa?
Nope.
Thank you. Sherry?
No.
Okay, so we only have one item for consideration today. Let's see. Finance thing, so I thought maybe I'd see Adam whether you wanted to make any comments leading into our discussion for today.
Thank you, Mayor Lennox, and through you, perhaps just a bit of a backdrop and chronology in terms of the asset management discussion, which is going to be hosted by SLBC Incorporated today, and joining us is Rup Lutzman and Elaine Chang, both from SLBC, and they'll be walking us through a bit of a training session and kind of a brief snapshot in terms of where we're at with our asset management plan updates for twenty twenty one. So in terms of a bit of a backdrop, we currently are operating with an asset management plan that is of a twenty thirteen vintage. Beyond that, we've had a notification from the province who drafted OREG five eighty eight seventeen, which was filed in late twenty seventeen, which effectively provided a framework for which Ontario municipalities must be compliant with and a roadmap, effectively enabling the maturation of asset management planning and financial planning for Ontario municipalities. That was passed in late twenty seventeen. In twenty eighteen, the township of Wellington North was successful in an application through the Federation of Canadian municipalities to conduct some asset management works. Specifically, we did an engagement whereby we did an asset management maturity assessment, a strategic asset management policy and a roadmap in terms of how we would effectively become compliant with OREG five eighty eight seventeen. And on the heels of that roadmap, we continued with a secondary round of application funding through FCM for their second intake of the municipal asset management plan funding, which would effectively see some initial steps on the heels of that roadmap that was conducted in twenty nineteen. So here today, we're going to be looking at a training session, which was part of our application through FCM in twenty twenty. We did a development of a risk management strategy and data readiness in terms of the maturation of our asset management initiatives for the township. We are working on updating our asset management plan for twenty twenty one to be compliant for the first step of OREG five eighty eight seventeen beyond the policy, which would require us to have an asset management plan for our core assets in place by July of twenty twenty two. And this session today, which would see a training session hosted by SLBC and attended by council and staff of the township, and which will also follow with a quick update in terms of where we are present day with the update of our twenty twenty one asset management plan update. So with that perhaps long-winded introduction, with your permission, Mayor Lennox, I would turn it over to SLBC Inc.
Thanks, Adam. That's great. And welcome, Rup and Elaine.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. And I'll show my screen. Hopefully, I get the right screen here. And you seen the presentation there? You see? Okay, so I'll put it on slideshow mode and there we go. Everybody's seen the slideshow. So thanks again for having Elaine and myself. I presented the Mayor Lennox and councillors. We are going to do a bit of a training overview on asset management. I'll do that piece and then that nicely dovetails into initial output from the asset management analysis for their plans, their asset management plan for the core asset. This is a nice picture from nineteen seventy five, Mountain Forest. I don't know if anybody recognizes this picture. Or maybe that's your car parked somewhere there. We found it to the archives somewhere. It was quite interesting to see so many vehicles parked there. Good infrastructure at the time. So in terms of the objectives of the training, we provide a bit of an update on the project. I think Adam did a bit of that and then overview education and best in class practices and of course, together with that is the M. And we just did the introduction and status. We'll do a little bit of introduction to asset management itself. We talk about what's called asset management line of sight, a clear line of sight from why are you in business at the township to delivering services, asset condition, performance management, what is the asset management system, some of the things that go with it, enablers, and then a review of the township's asset management, asset management plan outputs or the AMP outputs. Feel free to stop me at any time. Maybe Elaine, you could monitor to see if anybody's hands up with the slideshow. I can't really see much there. So the project itself, the main project or FCM project that Adam talked about had four key objectives. To advance asset management capabilities at the township, help you through the asset management plan development, to make information-based decisions on OpEx or operation expenditure or capital expenditure or CapEx for budgeting and long-term planning. Of course, the asset management plan should be in compliance with the OREG five eighty eight slash seventeen. But more importantly, if you do real good asset management practices or best practices, then the asset management plan will comply as a natural outcome at doing asset management practices and concepts and be better positioned to communicate asset management needs and infrastructure needs to council. These were the key objectives of the project. In terms of the timeline, we've been at it from April. We did a data assessment and the risk management and started collecting data for the asset management plan. Task three was the core assets from June to September. Your staff have been really good in providing us with information and input. And we are on track to meet the deadline, which is the first week of November. Today, we're doing the training and well, we've incorporated the AMP part as part of the presentation. So it's on track. I would give some real shout out to the township staff. They've been very forthcoming in information and data. You know, clarification of stuff that wasn't too clear or missing data. It was, I think you have a really comprehensive asset management plan right now. So in terms of asset management, we've heard a lot about asset management. It's a big buzzword out there. There's a legal regulation from the ministry on it. And we need to understand what's assets. They're things that have potential of actual value that the township includes the traditional physical infrastructure, roads, pipes, stormwater, wells, wastewater plants, lagoons. People have extended that to IT infrastructure, software, networking, you know, hardware. And some people are actually pushing the envelope and extending that to data and creating data asset management plans. And all these assets literally provide you a service to people who are paying for it. And these services got to be cost efficient, sustainable when you maintain these assets. So asset management itself, the planning is the process of making the best possible decisions regarding the design, construction, building, operation, maintenance, renewal, replacement and disposition of assets. Or in other words, it's about best planning around the life cycle of the assets. When you think about it, to acquire it, take it through all the life cycle phases and then ultimately retire it. And what you do every day and most so at the mayor and council level, every day your mind is about how do we achieve the right balance on the level of service we deliver to the residents and not only the actual citizens, but the commercial folks, the industrial folks and other stakeholders like the province. How do we do that at the lowest possible cost of ownership? And how do we manage the risk? And we tend to quantify the level of service and the cost really well, but we don't generally in the industry, we don't really quantify the risk too well. And it's usually a kind of informal, gut feel approach to things. But you need to quantify all three and achieve the right balance. It doesn't mean you don't have risk. It means you know what the risks are, which are risky assets, and what's the risk cost if they fail. And hopefully, if these risks are too high, you may want to bring it down to a more tolerable level. So these are some important concepts on asset management. So why do asset management? You do asset management because it's really one of the better investments any municipality could make. Generally, and in my experience working for the past fifteen years internationally in asset management, every dollar you take and spend on asset management, you get back a lot more dollars, four, five dollars in some case. The return on the investment can be over fifty percent return on investment, payback can be a year and a half to two years. And primarily, if you do risk-based asset planning from a level of service continuity, and I'll talk about this a little bit down the road. If you do risk-based planning, you tend to have less surprises to service delivery. If you have a growth and rationalization plan that's risk-based, they're saving three to five percent savings on the CapEx side of the budget. Renewal replacement, which tends to be your state of good repair, again, three to five percent saving on the CapEx budget. And of course, if you do an ONM plan, operations and maintenance plan that's risk-based, assuming you're in a really bad state, there could be ten to forty percent savings on the operational budget. And these are tried and tested numbers. A lot of people have been able to demonstrate that. The township is clearly not on the extreme left, but you know, you certainly will get a lot of returns on the investment. And you have been accruing benefits from the foundational work that Adam and Mike and the team have been doing at the township. But there is more to do and more savings. So one other thing, of course, besides asset management is a good investment, you got to meet the regulation. It's a regulated concept. And as Adam mentioned, you know, there are certain deadlines that the province has put out, started way back in two thousand nineteen. And that's, we were fortunate to work with the township and help you with your policy and asset management strategy. I must apologize. I think the slide you have, they had the old deadlines. These deadlines were revised this year. And the asset management plan for all assets are now due twenty twenty four. So you do have some flexibility to add some other asset classes. And there is another requirement by twenty twenty five, you need to look ahead and you could see it here and talk about what's the proposed level of service for the next ten years. So once this asset management plan is done, your next asset management plan should include the level, the future level of service for the community and by assets and what's the appropriate risk you want to take on and the affordability assessment. That's the stuff here. So that's really key in terms of the next major step that the township has to undertake on the asset management from a compliance standpoint. So this is just an excerpt from the OREG, so you could see all the key things there. It's good information to have and read so that you stay on top of the regulation. And of course, Mike and the team there is very focused on this, so you don't need to worry too much if you, you know, follow all the details there. So in terms of asset management, it's a very comprehensive and really robust approach to managing assets. There is an ISO fifty five thousand standard has been developed that everybody is following. There are lots like the Federation Canadian municipalities, the Canadian Network of Asset Managers, the Institute of Asset Management. Everybody follows the ISO standard and the ISO standard pretty much has four buckets. You look at stuff. You look at a line of sight. Imagine up here, this is why you're in business. You run a township. There are regulations and there are services that you're supposed to provide under this regulated industry. You set direction, you program the work, you prepare, and then you implement. And then if everything goes really well, there is reliable, cost-effective service delivery out of the bottom end of the line of sight. But there are other things that happen when you manage assets in this manner. You need to monitor the asset condition. You need to monitor performance against level of service objectives. You may need to make the connection with council's strategic objectives and priorities. You need to do the review, more risk-based review. And there are three enablers that keep this wheel moving and that line of sight working smoothly. There is the people and organization, and people are not just township staff. It's the extended staff you have through consultants and contractors who help you deliver, plan and deliver service and how you set up as an organization to manage this stuff. There is the technology systems that you need because you can't do stuff by paper or Excel all the time. It has to be commercial enterprise systems. And then there's all the data that you collect in the course of delivering work, which could be operations, maintenance or capital projects. So that's the nine buckets, nine elements that fall into the four buckets. So I'll pause there and see if there are any questions. Elaine, any, any questions came up? Okay, so I'll drill down in each of these, just a little overview, so you could see what each of these buckets mean. So first of all, line of sight and we start with setting direction and I have this little thing at the top so you could see where exactly we are as we move through. So in setting direction, you, you look at your organizational strategic plan. And that's at the highest level, the council would establish your vision, mission, your strategic priorities. You would have an asset management policy that's based on that. There are asset management principles, requirements, roles, responsibilities, all got to line up with a strategic plan. And then you would have an AM improvement strategy and roadmap. And this two AM policy and the strategy was developed a couple of years ago. And the township has been following that and implementing asset management concepts and practices. One of the key one there was update your asset management plan based on the template that the ministry provided. And that's the last area there, the asset management plans where you list your asset classes, service descriptions, stated infrastructure, level of service targets, the risk to meet in those targets, the lifecycle activities and the financial forecast, and Elaine will talk about that. So the, the last two actually drives your budgeting process. And we will talk some more as we get in into programming. So programming, you want to do risk-based programming. And risk is really the probability or likelihood that something happens. And then what's the impact on levels of service, the consequences on level of service. And usually we use a one to five scale. In fact, that's pretty much international, although they haven't formalized it. But anywhere you go, they talk about risk as a one to five scale. And when you multiply those two, likely or the probability by the consequence on levels of service, you get a risk score that could be up on the top right side, which is catastrophic if it does happen, to insignificant. So you tend to look at when you do risk-based planning, you look at where things are up on the top right. You have a feel for what's tolerable. So imagine there's a line here that says, well, we can't tolerate anything above that line. That means that you need to have short-term strategies, lifecycle strategies. These are capital projects or maybe operations and maintenance initiatives that will move anything up here either down if it was coming from a consequence of failure or move it if it was coming from the probability of condition and move it across this way if it was something from a consequence. Maybe you have one pipeline and if it fails, it's going to impact Mountain Forest, then maybe you twin the pipeline. And then you have medium term and then the longer term, you'd be monitoring your assets as the risk goes up. But the approach to risk means when you do your capital budget, you should be identifying what's the risk profile. And if you do this capital project, what would be the residual risk? Because what you're really doing here is buying down risk by making investments in capital and operational dollars. And also, when you do risk, the nice thing about it, the consequence of failure is a proxy for the criticality of the asset. Based on how important it is to delivering service, you may run it to failure if it's not that important. Run to failure means you have the parts, materials ready. When it fails, you jump in and fix it. You may move to time-based maintenance and then highly critical assets. You may want to monitor the health at any point in time. You may go in regularly and take different readings and it's more the predictive type maintenance work you're doing. And as we talk about work, good operations and maintenance improves reliability of the asset, extends the life and really make sure that when you do raise your hand and say, I need to do a capital project, you're doing the right project now because you've squeezed everything out of the asset. So you need to be able to find a sweet spot, the right mix of reactive and proactive work. And that's tend to be in the municipal sector about seventy five, eighty percent. And that's what we call the optimized zone. And you know when you're there because the assets are failing or the insignificant critical, critical assets. And you are prepared for that failure. The ones that are not failing, you're doing work in advance at failing. And that's what a lot of your staff have been doing in the township. So when we get down to preparation, the key one here is to understand what are the lifecycle strategies? And this is developing the asset management plan. It's the focus of Elaine's slides coming up. And there are five key questions you ask when you develop an asset management plan. Interestingly, this is exactly what the province has for their template for an asset management plan. It says, what's the current state of my assets? You look at the asset registry. It's in PSAB, it's in GIS, in an Excel spreadsheet. What's the condition of the asset? And what's the residual life of the asset? And you'll see all that stuff when Elaine talks about it. Then you say, what is the required level of service for this asset, the pavement, the pipes, the treatment plants and the buildings and everything? Then you ask, well, which of these assets are critical? What's the risk profile? And if that's where, when they, you look at a profile, what's the best operations and maintenance and capital improvement strategy to manage this risk to a tolerable level? And if you identify that, then you say, what's the short, medium or long-term funding to achieve that? And that's the step you follow step by step. And of course, each of them have a little few sub-steps that we tend to follow. But that's pretty much it. And it all gets wrapped into the asset management plan. And each of these questions literally is a chapter in your asset management plan. And this is what the asset management plan looks like. You have an executive summary, your level of service, stated infrastructure, lifecycle strategies and risk, financing strategy. And we like to put a last chapter that says, when next you build a plan, you need to do XYZ, which would collect more accurate, accurate data, prepare for the future level of service, which is a ten-year outlook to meet the twenty twenty five deadline. That's the kind of stuff we put in the plan improvement and monitoring section. The next thing you need to be able to do on implementation, there are two things, the maintenance and capital projects. Capital projects tend to be big ticket items. But they also have a problem in that when they bring these assets in, you want to make sure first of all, it's designed with operations and maintenance in mind. And secondly, when it's commissioned and handover, they have all the data and the appropriate technology system so they could squeeze the assets and get the most out of it. So when you do capital projects, you tend to do initiation, planning, design, implementation, commissioning and handover. But you have a little area that most people don't benefit from, the warranty period. And quite often, when you don't document and have a means of tracking a warranty, when it fails, you end up spending your hard-earned money when the contractor or the consultant should be paying to fix that. And then you should close out a project. So this is, there's some steps, no need to run through this. It's exactly the same stuff there. This is for buildings, facilities, large roads and civil programs. But what I wanted to show you from an asset management standpoint, when you do capital projects, here are the things you need to add, what I call the asset management ready elements. You need to have at the initiation, operations and maintenance, Matt and his team, Corey and the team involved. And they should have what we call asset management readiness specs. You should make sure that every bit of data you need to run that asset should be attached to you in a template to your RFP. And when the contractor cuts the ribbon, all that setup and ONM has everything they need. Unfortunately, there are lots of historic data gaps, missing data and information. And whilst we try and hard to close those historic data gaps, we keep creating future data gaps because we not getting it when the assets, new assets are built or upgraded. So you want an ONM involvement in the project management plan. You want a design for operability, maintainability, reliability, interchangeability of spears. You want to do value engineering, all that stuff. And include all that in your RFP and your contractor specifications. And then as it's being constructed, start populating your asset database. Have the contractor do that. When you commission the asset and it's pristine and new, you want to make sure that that top of the curve, that all that data is sitting there, pictures, you know, the pump performance and all that cool stuff. Train the staff, put the warranty tracking in this maintenance or work management system. And then at the backend, did we achieve what we wanted? Did we reduce the risk? And have we made reliability and continuity of service a little more better, better in the business? And when we do the work management, it's the work initiation, planning work, scheduling work, executing work, closing it out, put in the work orders and history and evaluate in this. But you can do this by paper and Excel. You need technology solution, just like your financial system and GIS to do this stuff. And then you could run all the cool reports, sorry, where you could look at the work order backlog, the percentage of preventive maintenance done, schedule compliance, PM compliance, all these different things the system could run for you. And you can know if you're in control of the work and you're doing the right work at the right time. So moving along and on asset performance, this is an example of the condition side. And this is for transportation. Where you, you look at three categories, the capacity and use, you look at the functionality of the asset and the quality. And here's an example where you could rate it. Is the roads convenient access? Does it provide alternative routes? Is it consistent and predictable travel under capacity and use? And it's available at all times. And then you could say, yes, it's good or very good in terms of how you stand for the future. Functionality, does it comply with legislation? Is it safe? Is it smooth? Bridges and culverts suitable for functional needs, sidewalks, all the things you would rate that. And then quality, is the pavement in a state of good repair, the bridges, culverts, maintenance work done in time? So this is how you lay out level of service. And you would have targets and notice we have the future bucket here. This is what you need to populate for the next deadline for the OREG. And here is what's pretty much an international standard for condition scoring. One is very good. Now, I don't know why they chose one is very good and five is very poor, but that's what everybody adopts. And asset is physically sound, is performing as originally intended, is maybe new or begging in at its service life, or even if it's midway, it's well maintained. And then you get to good, it's physically sound, it's been used for some time, but maybe mid-stage. And you get down to poor, physically unsound, not performing as originally intended, it's end of life and failure could be imminent. But if you take that approach and use that consistent thing and if for every asset class, what a one, two, three, four, five means, maybe the actual description may be different, but you end up with the same scale. And condition is a proxy for the likelihood the asset is going to fail. Obviously, one that's very good is low likely to failure. Five, hey, it's going to fail pretty soon, tomorrow or next week or so. And when we look at level of service side, you know, if you look at your strategic plan, legislative service, for example, the OREG, Clean Water Act, Safe Drinking Water Act. Clean Water Act, Safe Drinking Water Act, Minimum Maintenance Standards. Then you look at what we call the community level service. Capacity and use services have enough capacity and accessible to everyone. Services from a function standpoint, meet customer needs, limiting health, safety issues. Services are reliable from a quality standpoint and respond to customers. And they're affordable. They provide at the lowest cost for both current and future customers. And then as we move along, you take the community or customer level service and you drill down further. What does it mean at a technical level? For capacity and use, you look at growths. Assets of sufficient capacity and available, convenient, accessible. Function, you may upgrade it to meet regulation or reduce any of, you know, if it's improve energy efficiency or maybe reduce carbon footprint. Renewal O N M is really replacing like for like. And financial sustainability, the assets adequately funded in both the long and short and long term. And we look at the risk to maintenance level of service, as I described earlier. And based on that risk, you will have like cycle activities. On capacity and use, you will have expansions. Function, you will have upgrade projects, renewal and replacement projects, maintenance activities, operation activities. And that results into your capital budget for expansion, upgrade and renewal. And your operating budget for maintenance and operations. And if you did, if you funded this well or whatever money you had, and you did these things, then you're going to have residual risk. And based on the residual risk, when your next budget cycle comes up, you would look at which assets are now top on the risk scale. And you would want to make sure that you, you address those in the budget. So moving along just on the system, and I think in the next five minutes or so, Elaine, I think you'd be ready to, to roll. So on the management system side, this is something maybe that's really important from a council standpoint. You're looking at the enterprise aspect, how you're doing this business. And when you look at the threat events that could impact the township, they fall into three categories. The big ones like the pandemics, extreme climate events, you know, employment action, maybe not so much, blackouts, all that. New regulations, OREG 588, population change, growth, social preferences. And, and then the bottom, which is the run-of-the-mill stuff, you know, you consume the asset to deliver level of service. And you have poor O N M practices or whatever. And then you apply the risk framework, you'll see the same likelihood and consequence. You have the risk profile, you take data from your systems and you create that. And here you have four plans, the level of service continuity plan, the growth rationalization plan, renewal replacement plan, and the owner master plan. So that's what you look at the risk side. Under people and organization, you need to have what I call a rights sourcing strategy. Where you look at what's core, non-core work, look at all the different folks who are, you know, the way, where you, you, you're internal staff, your external service providers. And you look at what's core, non-core, and you figure out a right balance. And you could use this approach here to make sure that you always have the right folks involved in helping you do your work. You also need to be looking at an enterprise culture for asset management. You know, on the left side is where everybody is busy working, but they don't see the big picture in asset management. And I guess this overview training is to help everybody say, have the same common vision for asset management. And once we all lined up and, sorry. On this, I guess maybe it's Mayor Lennox here, on this piece here, you leading the charge for asset management. And everybody is lined up and the township staff, everybody is following where we want to go so that whatever funding is provided, people are always doing the right projects, maintenance tasks at the right time for the right reason. And stakeholder all got to be engaged on this stuff. And the stakeholder engagement plan is something you should probably be looking at, you know, consult with all the stakeholders, analyze their interests, and this could be the community. We actually are working with the township of Perry. And you know, I, I think the township of Wellington is doing some really cool stuff. It's all relative. But we went out there and we engaged the public. And we, we had a public engagement plan to ask about level of service current and future. So that's the kind of example of how you engage people, create your engagement plan. But when you engage people there on asset management, for example, here's what successful change looks like. You're really clear on what's going on currently. You have a vision for the desired state, maybe based on what I've articulated today. There is a step-by-step roadmap, a solution that's believable, a plan to implement. Senior leadership commitment, absolutely spot on. It's very rare that I get to do training like this to the mayor and council. I hope this is working out well for you. And you know, Coalition of Change Champions, Mike and Adam and, and you know, Matt and Corey, they all believe in this stuff. And more importantly, there's urgency to do things and move from where you are. That's really what creates the change process. So in terms of data and information, you want to capture asset inventory data, you know, unique IDs, location, size. We talk about a level of service, so the key performance indicators, targets, goals, actual, the risk, likely the failure, consequence of failure, mitigation. And then when you do work, O N M history, renewal, upgrade history, cost, labor, material, internal costs, external costs, these are the things you capture. You would have an asset hierarchy where you could look at the township overall. You could look at buildings, water plants, you could look at segments of road, you could get down, right down to the asset. The traffic light, for example, signs and pumps. And when you're on the left side, you could take a financial look, a cost look. And you could take a reliability, condition, process reliability look. But you can't do this on Excel. This has to be on a software tool. So that's a key thing here on the data and technology side. And you may be able to take, once you have that data, take it and create dashboards. And this is on the left side, these are the different things. You take the data from your systems. You may have things to correlations, grading, is things, are things getting better, it's heading down. These are just how you set it up. But this is an actual dashboard we did for municipality. The first one here, it was for water. You could click on the dashboard, you see the strategic layer for council and executives. You get down to the tactical layer for middle management. And this layer here is for frontline staff. So this is ultimately where you could go in asset management if you have the right technology tools. Like, for example, in an asset management program where you do the planning, you do, or that's delivery, the plan to check act or the P D C A cycle. This is where you check and this is your support services. You'd have your human resources, GIS, financial, all that stuff. You'd have capacity modeling, like road modeling, hydraulic modeling. And core service delivery, the most important one here, you need is a computerized work management system. So there's quite a lot that exists at the township, but the work management system is, is a major gap in your technology landscape right now. And you do have different reporting tools and you could go pull the data and, and manage that. But probably your biggest gap right now is on the technology side. So with that in mind, that's the end of the training. Pause here, any questions, any, if there's any area that you wanted me to elaborate on? What we're going to get into here is how we've leveraged all that and created the updated asset management plan for the township. And Elaine will walk through that. So any questions from the team, from the mayor and council or the township staff? I think Mayor Lennox, you might be on mute.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to say to everybody, please go ahead and speak up. I can't see everybody in the gallery. So if you've got questions, just go ahead and speak up.
Okay, don't see anything, anything?
All right.
So Elaine, why don't I pass it on to you? Are you going to share your screen?
Yes, I can't share until you stop.
All right, so I'll stop sharing. And well, thank you, everyone. I hope this training stuff was helpful. I like, maybe if you bear with me, Elaine, one last comment.
Yes.
I worked with one municipality and everybody was looking and I said, how come I didn't get any questions? And the, the, the lead laughed and he said, Rupe, we have this concept of soak time. When everybody go back and they have, they're in the shower, they say, oh, that's what Rupe was talking about. So maybe the soak time concept might work. So feel free, if you know, you have any questions, you could always get ahold of us through Adam and Mike and the team. And we'd be happy to share additional info or clarify anything. So over to you, Elaine, and thanks again.
Thank you. Does everyone see my screen where it says AMP outputs? Okay, perfect. And you recognize this, the graphic on the, on the right? Can, just to check, do you see my mouse moving? Okay, just checking what kind of technology I have to work with here. Okay. So, so you recognize this, this is a schematic of what the contents of an AMP, an asset management plan are. And our, our asset management plan is actually for the, for the township is actually structured a little bit differently because we follow the county's template, but it has the same content. So it's just kind of split up differently. You know, in, in terms of, it has a, it'll have a key concepts section and then a summary for each of the four asset or asset areas and then details, a section on details. So, but rest assured, you have all of this content in there. Before I dive in, I also want to just clarify, because I find that many people, when we, when we work on asset management plans with municipalities, many of the staff, many and, and counselors too, they don't necessarily understand the scope of what we're doing. And I just want to clarify that, that we did not go out and do condition assessments and look at all your bridges and look at all your roads and, and all of that. We didn't do that. That was all done. So condition assessments and managing your assets, that was all done by your staff and they do that on a day-to-day basis. They, they collect, they collect information, they know what needs are out there. So what the asset management plan is doing is pulling all that information together into one consolidated place and putting a consistent lens on it all to try and understand, well, what do we actually need these assets for? What is the level of service we're trying to deliver? And what, you know, condition do we need those assets to be in? And what are the risks of not improving these assets? So we apply those, that lens on all, on this wide range of different condition assessments and needs assessments that you have. And then try and give you a way to prioritize those. So, so that's, that's really what the asset management plan is about and, and giving it to you in a, in a short range and a long range so that you can, so that you can, well, to really to make Adam's job easier, I guess, no? And then, and then, and then he can bring you a, you know, a consolidated, simple document that says, we chose these projects and these renewals and these expansions, and here are the reasons. And you can then bring that to the public and say, look, we followed a rigorous process to, to prioritize these things. So that's really what the asset management plan is about. Now that said, I just want to point out also that the slide, so the asset management plan, we're kind of in the, in the final stages. We've been at it since spring and we've been, we've been sort of in a bit of a calibration phase. Now that we, you know, we have our, we have our list of needs, we've consolidated all this information from technical updates. And like I said, road needs studies, bridge studies and so on. We've consolidated all that. We've, we've used different sources for understanding replacement values and how much it'll cost to improve, do the renewals and so on that we need. We, that, those cost estimates and so on needed a little bit of calibration. So we're kind of in that stage. And the slides that were circulated last week, we're kind of in a, you know, that was sort of one snapshot in our process. And the numbers have changed slightly and they, well, slightly, they've changed for the better. And I'm just going to point that out now. And we're, we're not going to show, I don't want to confuse you with the new numbers yet, but those will be circulated. I'll, I'll speak to the new numbers. Those will be circulated in the, in the asset management plan, once it's finalized and presented to you. So, so just, I'm going, I'm going to just dive into what, what's in the slide deck to show you what to expect in the content of the asset management plan when you receive that. So basically, we start with, we're going to go through each of those questions that Rupe just went through, which are, which are the, you know, the principles of the asset management plan. So what, what does the township own? Here, we, we've estimated about $600,000. Now, this is where we, with calibration, we've, you can see that the biggest chunk of that is really transportation and that's the roads. We have decided in the, in the future, in the next version of the, in our next revision of it, as we're working through this, we actually decided to remove the sort of the base of many of the gravel roads, which is the biggest chunk of your, your road network, which makes about $100 million difference. So this number is actually going to come down to more like 470. And you can see, so this is, it's a big territory that you're, you're managing. 237 kilometers of gravel roads, 15 kilometers of surface treated, 137 of paved in the urban areas. So that's in blue, including the green here, which are the township's portion of, of provincial roads. Then you also have over 100 bridges and culverts and over 150 kilometers of underground pipe. We also included in the asset management plan, the vertical assets in the water and wastewater networks. So the, the wastewater treatment plants, both of them, and the lagoon, the, there are several sewage pump stations and wells in, in the two systems. There are also some stormwater ponds. So that was all included in this asset management plan, which, which expands on the 2013 version. For transportation, we included things like beyond just the roads and the bridges. We also included the sidewalks and traffic signals, streetlights, so that you're really getting a good picture of what does it cost to deliver this service? We really want to focus more on service delivery and less on, you know, I have an asset. It's because what you're, what you exist for as an organization is to deliver services. So here is, I just included this, just so you can see, there's, these are some of the numbers that were updated. The biggest changes in the transportation side. And again, that's just because we removed the base, the value of the base, because you, for the gravel roads, because you never really replace the base on those. So this will be adjusted too. I, I don't want to confuse things too much, but in effect, the condition distribution is about the same. So I didn't, I kept it, I left the same slide in there. So really about 80% of your assets are in fair condition or better, which is a state of good repair. That means, you know, no problem, it's deteriorating as it should. And, and you don't have to worry generally about these assets. They're on their life cycle. You have some assets that are nearing the end of life, so about 10% in poor condition. And 5% in very poor condition, which are really close to their end of life or in some cases beyond. So those are the ones that, and we've listed them here, so assets in very poor condition. So about a kilometer and a half of gravel road. I think one of them is 30th, 30 side road. So about 1.2 kilometers of 30 side road, that's a gravel road. Between, I think between third and Wellington Road 16. So just a short kilometer, seg, kilometer, 1.2 kilometer segment. And then there's one segment that, I don't know, Adam, actually Adam and Dale have told me that, and Matt, they, they all said this is more of a driveway. It's Bristol Road. Bristol Road near, at South Water Street. And I swear I cannot find it on Google Maps. It, it doesn't exist on Google Maps. So I'm going to believe that it's probably a low priority. Karen?
It's sort of down at the end of South Water Street and it's a low priority now, I would think. But if they put a pumping station in there and Corey can probably correct me if I'm wrong, then it becomes a bit of a higher priority, I would think.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So, and that'll all get coordinated. And that's the purpose of, of having this type of information all in the asset management plan. So it sounds like right now, in, compared with all of the other priorities, So it sounds like right now in compared with all of the other priorities you have, it's probably more of a driveway that's not so high priority. But once that development kicks in, then then it will, it will bubble up to the top. So there's also some bridge and culvert work that needs to be done. And that's based on the bridge, bridge assessment. There are, you know, a few signals and sidewalks that naturally need to be replaced at a certain time. And based on the or aligned with the technical updates, there are cast iron pipes that need to be replaced and expanded at the same time. You have asbestos cement pipes and Arthur that need to be renewed. And of course, you already know about the water tower plans and the and the exploration for a new well. So so those are kind of the, those are the assets in very poor condition that we identified. And but that doesn't mean you have to do all of these things. So we're going to look at how we want to prioritize these things. Another element of the asset management plan is to to show what is the average age of your assets? And I'm just showing a couple of examples here. It's not meaningful to show you an overview aggregate of all your assets, because all assets have different theoretical service lives. So I've picked a couple of examples here to show how it'll be illustrated in the asset management plan. So if you look at water mains and Arthur, you have these different water main materials, PVC, ductile iron, cast iron. They have, they each coincidentally all have a 90 year service life. And you can see the average age by material. And the cast iron was installed earlier in a different sort of, I guess, construction era. So that tends to be the older and this is why, this is why the technical updates are recommending that you renew those. For the Mount Forest example, I chose wastewater, you have a similar, you have a similar graphic. Again, you can see the the white area shows how much longer you, how much remaining life you have until you hit that theoretical service life. And then and for clay, there's no installation, your data, to me, that means it's really, really old. So probably some monitoring is needed CCTV or something, just to, just to make sure that it's, you know, that it stands up until you decide to renew it in coordination with other corridor work, which is the complication with with these underground assets. So from there, now that we know what we own and what condition or age it's in, then we want to move into levels of service and think about, okay, well, what are we trying to do with all these assets? And we look at these by service area. So so the the Oreg, the Ontario regulation actually requires for core assets. So for roads, roads, bridges, water, wastewater and stormwater, they actually define specific level of service indicators that need to be reported. So I'll point those out to you. And the other thing I want to point out is that for this iteration of the asset management plan for the 2022 deadline, it's not required for the township to define targets, which is very important. So at this time, really what the province wants you to do is is become aware of what service level you're providing and start understanding sort of the cost implication of what you're doing now, what your established level, your existing levels of service are, be they formal or informal, and then and then work toward formalizing, and that means, you know, council approved targets going into the 2025 asset management plan. So so as we're looking at this, think of it, think of it through that lens, that you're going to have to commit to some targets. Now, these are pretty high levels, so description, there's some qualitative ones. So description of the road network, description of traffic that's supported by municipal bridges. So the description or maps, so what we've included is the map here. And this is really the township's opportunity to say, you know, this is, this is our road network. We feel like there's a lack of connectivity or there's, you know, that's so it's more of a qualitative thing there. On the quantitative side, the the Oreg requires technical levels of service. So specifically, number of lane kilometers of arterial collector and local roads. And so we've reported also the gravel and surface treated separately, plus the local collector and arterial. And you report it by as a proportion of surface area of the municipality. So this becomes now your benchmark. So if you, so you can kind of monitor, you know, whether you need, I guess, whether you need to add more of a certain type of road, if you need more collectors or locals or it kind of aligns with the way you're developing in terms of, you know, urban, urban growth and so on. So like I said, it, you probably wouldn't necessarily set a target, but just to say, you know, this is our benchmark for right now. And then and then the average pavement condition index value has to be reported by paved or gravel. We also included surface treated because it's slightly different. Right now, you're, you're in a good position now. If you, you can imagine if you set a target to be, to have a higher pavement condition index, then then your costs are going to go up. Or you can say, well, we're okay with a lower value average condition index. So that's going to save us some money potentially. Bridges with number of bridges or percentage of bridges with loading restrictions, right now, there are three of them. So that means 3%. Again, this is, this is a benchmark and average condition index for bridges. So you're, they're both in good condition right now. We out, we also added some indicators that were so beyond the Oreg ones that we consider, we find meaningful and use in in many municipalities. So percent of assets in a state of good repair. So it's it's a variation of the average condition index. It's just, it it gives you, it gives a little bit of a different lens, because you can, you know, the average kind of dilutes the the effects of the extremes, right? So what's important is we want to know how many, how much of our network is in good, you know, state of good repair. Sidewalks meeting accessibility standard of 1.5 meters. So this is, you know, consideration, we just want people to be able to use the sidewalks even with disabilities. And then sidewalk length as a percentage of urban roadside. So this is a connectivity issue. And again, it doesn't mean that you necessarily want to do, you're, you're probably not going to aim for 100%, but knowing that there, you you really would do a more detailed study to understand where there are specific connectivity issues. On the water side, similar, these are, these community levels of service are all Oreg. So description of user groups served by water systems. So you've got the two systems in the urban areas, description of areas that have fire flow. So your, your both networks are good, there's just this 200 meter segment on Cork Street. But you've read about this in your technical updates. So there's a, there's a need for pipe expansion here and increased flow to meet fire flow needs. Description of boiled water advisories, there were none, so that made it easy to report. And description of unplanned service outages due to water main breaks. Again, none makes easy reporting and great service. So not to say that there were no water main breaks, but the system is set up in a way that even if a main breaks, you don't have to shut down service to anyone. So and that's obviously deliberate design. So technical levels of service, percentage of properties connected to municipal water systems. Right now, that's about 66%. And the and the idea here is that is that as you're developing, you want your new development to go in air, go into areas that have connectivity to the water systems, right? You don't want to be expanding beyond your urban boundaries too much and and adding more load. So so that's another, it kind of sets a baseline for you so that you know, so that you're kind of driven to to develop in that in that more responsible way. And then percentage of properties with fire flow, this really just considers those, you just want to resolve those six properties that need along Cork Street that need increased flow. And like I mentioned, no service issues in terms of boil water and breaks. We added the same metric in terms of state of good repair here, so 63% state of good repair. For wastewater, description of user groups served by the wastewater systems. Again, the two urban areas and then effluent discharge from the sewage treatment plants. So that's, that's really just a description. And then there's a, there's a parallel indicator on the technical side, which is, which shows the last three years. So no violations in 2018. And then in the last couple of years, there have been ammonia, ammonium nitrate and E. coli extinctions. And the staff are aware of this and they're, you know, they're monitoring and and, you know, managing these. There is also connection days affected by backups, so four, two and two. And again, a percentage of properties connected to the system. Here, the state of good repair, percent of assets in state of good repair are 53%. Those numbers, because of the adjustments to our, the replacement value estimates and so on, those are going to change a little bit. But they're, they're generally aligned, it's not going to be very different. The last service area for levels of service that we look at is stormwater. And here, we, we had a bit of a data issue, but I'll tell you what, so what we were able to fill in was, so first of all, description of areas of the municipality protected by flooding. We got, we did get some information from the Grand River Conservation Authority that, so really on the on the east side of this green boundary, they've done some modeling and they were able to provide us with this map. It just becomes a little bit more difficult to report on percentage of properties. Again, this is an Oreg requirement, percentage of properties resilient to 100 year storm. So what's good about this map is that it shows the, oh, sorry, down here, there's a little highlighted number down here that says, you know, buildings in the flood zone and there's like, I think it was 15, sorry, my screen's blocking it. Yeah, 15 buildings in the flood plain. And that's the type of, that's exactly the type of information we need. We just don't have it for for the sogging valley side. So, yeah, so that's why we didn't report on it, because it wasn't quite complete. So basically, and they were able to provide us a map, just not overlaid on properties to be able to tell us the number of affected buildings. The other piece is to to present the percentage of the municipal stormwater system that's resilient to a five year storm. And that would require, that would require a stormwater model. So we didn't, we didn't have that data either. And so these are things that that the municipality should or the township should probably, you know, look at for the next iteration of the asset management plan. So we have 90% of assets in a state of good repair. So moving from there, then, how do we, how do we resolve those, those level of service needs? Well, the improvements that are needed over the next 10 years and for this asset management plan, we're focusing on the next 10 years. We've identified $38 million worth of expansion and upgrade needs across all the four services. And, you know, the the water and wastewater ones were pretty much all from the technical updates. And transportation and transportation ones were pretty much from the the development charges background study, which identifies where new development will be and so on. And stormwater is really, that money is really just for, just for developing models. So the bigger side is the renewal needs. Now, of course, I mentioned, this is where actually the numbers are going to change quite a bit, they're going to come down quite a bit to this transportation one is coming down to about 20 million, because we're taking out the base and we're not having to, you know, renew the base of gravel roads, which is, like I said, it's a huge chunk of your portfolio. So that will be much more manageable. The other ones are are quite similar, water came down to 10, just with some adjustment of values in vertical assets. And and so that's the renewal need. So it's going to be about, I think it came to about 80 million. On on the operations and maintenance side, we basically, so what we also need to understand, what will be the operations and maintenance need going forward? And so we, we spoke with staff and basically, you know, we're we, from what we understand, the current budgets are generally sufficient for the current level of service. So so we, but we do need to account for growth of the asset portfolio as you take on new assets as there, you know, as you assume ownership of new assets or if you construct any new assets, then then that, of course, there's an operating and maintenance impact to that. So so we, going forward, we basically took the 2021 budget and sort of increased it proportionally to capture the needs, the estimated needs of new roads, stormwater and sidewalks. For water and wastewater, we were told that it's the current amount is sufficient to absorb expected growth assets. In the future, though, rather than doing it this way, sort of at a, you know, full operating budget level, ideally, what we would want to do is be able to know, okay, how much did we, how much, how much did we spend on, you know, on a specific activity? How much, how much did we spend on work orders to do repairs on on mechanical components of wells on, you know, and things like that, to be much more specific? So that we know if we build a new well or a new sewage pumping station, how much can we expect to spend on that specific asset as opposed to looking at it at a, at a full service level, which is much less specific. So the financial impact, then, so this actually is going to come down, right now, it's saying that well, this, this is the past from 2020, sorry, 2018 to 2021, this won't change, obviously. The annual average expenditures for those years, including the budget for for this year is about 11 million per year. And then we are, so and what we're trying to show on the other side is going forward, what's the forecast? Well, what has already been budgeted, there is a capital plan that includes budget for certain renewal and certain, certain, sorry, certain upgrade and expansion projects and certain renewal projects. And then the dotted lines show the the expected average annual needs for expansion and renewals. Now, as I said, the renewal number is going to come down quite a bit because of the change to the roads. So I, and I have, I have a, you know, sort of a, an initial version, a more up to date version of that, which I can show, but we do, we do still need to have some review of that with the staff. So to, but there will still be a gap. It's, it's, you know, it's not going to go down to zero. So the the idea here is not necessarily that you're going to fund every, I mean, your options are to basically to try and reduce your costs by either adjusting lifecycle strategies. I mean, this obviously isn't an instant thing, but you know, visit, revisiting your lifecycle strategy is how you're maintaining, operating and renewing your assets. Adjusting the service levels, which is something that, you know, you're, you're going to have to set the service levels going into the next asset management plan. So do you need to lower them? That's going to be the question. And prioritizing work on high or very high risk assets. So the idea here is you do those first and maybe you don't, you know, maybe you don't do the the lower risk assets. So you might not, you might not completely, you know, do do everything that's needed there. But you know, if you make that decision, you're doing it based on what's by prioritizing your risk. And then the other option, of course, is to seek new revenue sources. So adjustments to taxes or user rates, development charges, also the stormwater levy is is an option. So oh, I did throw it in here, actually, this is the, this is the newer one. So now it's, it's looking like a $5 million. So this is what you'll see in the, with probably some minor, possibly some minor adjustments, but this is what you'll see in the asset management plan. So just a final note here on regulatory compliance. So the next deadline is by 2024 to have, July 2024, to have the asset management plan for non-core assets. Incorporating proposed target level of service by 2025. And then the township will have to update every five years with an annual review by July 1st. So that means you'll, council will, will get regular updates on progress in, you know, delivering, you know, capital projects and renewal of assets, as well as, you know, improving your asset management activity, planning activities too. And in terms of continuous improvement, some of the things that we identified are opportunities to improve data. So for example, establishing an authoritative So for example, establishing an authoritative database of assets for asset management planning. And, and, you know, and also supporting the operational activities with that same database. And processes to keep that data up to date. That's really key. There's a need for an asset management, or sorry, a work order management system, which Rup talked about. And that'll help, help, help the organization understand exactly what the lifecycle costs are by different asset types. And it'll also streamline maintenance, maintenance processes. So that there's not so much, you know, paper pushing and so that you're, you have records, computer records on work that's been done on your assets. There's an opportunity to implement an asset management decision support system. So basically, taking these analytical processes and being able to, being able to do them. In a much more streamlined way in a software system rather than Excel. And, and that way also not necessarily needing to hire consultants to do it. It'll just be much easier for your, your staff to do it. And then creating a stormwater model to, to be able to report on those level of service indicators that are required by Oreg. And finally, a key thing which, which I mentioned before is working toward establishing level of service targets for twenty twenty five. So that's a, that's a rundown of the asset management plan. Are there any questions?
Anybody have questions?
I have one just quickly, Andy.
Go ahead.
Thanks for that, Elaine. I just jotted down when you were going over the roads. What, like, I don't want a collector lane is on the four hundred or the four hundred series highways. What do you call a collector in our township?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's totally different. Sorry.
Maybe some passing lanes, but, no, I was just curious, that's all, Elaine.
Yeah, yeah, no, so it's not, so it's sort of. They usually kind of go through residential areas, but. They're not, so they're not your crescents, but your crescents might connect to a collector, right? Yeah.
Okay, no, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't even think of that. I, yes, thank you for highlighting that potential miscommunication.
Anybody else have questions?
I, I just have one quick question and that it's. Just, and, and maybe you're not the best person to answer the question, Elaine, but it's around this issue of excluding the road bases. Some road bases probably do require some upgrading over the period of time. So does that, is that included in there somewhere?
So for the paved roads, all of the road bases are included. And for the, for the gravel and surface treated, yes, you're right. There could be benefit to including, to, there could be benefit for sure. There could be a need to renew the base on those, some of those roads. The problem, the, the difficulty is that the road needs study gives you a score. Of the surface, it doesn't separate out the score for the base, either, you know, whether it's gravel or paved. So it's really hard. It's, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to model the future need anyway. And right now, and, and we see this basically in every municipality, municipalities for their, for their gravel roads. They generally just do a, just renew the, sort of reshape the top and add gravel. And the problem is that, well, which is, which seems to be, it, it's, it's fine, that's the level of service. So that's really what we're trying to capture right now as a starting point. The difficulty, the other difficulty that we have is that, and I mean this across all municipalities also, is that. The, the way that these things are recorded, we don't know the whole life cycle. To know if, you know, if the, if only the surface was renewed or if the surface and the base, this is in the case of paved. So I think there's going to be some, that, we need, basically what I'm saying is we need more data to make those decisions.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess your, your answer, what I'm getting from that is that. We have to accept that we continue to have data gaps and that we, this provides this good guidance in terms of knowing what the financial requirements are. And how to manage those assets going forward. But there still are going to be things that are outside of the. Data sets that we can need to continue to manage by other methods.
Right. Can I add one more thing? So what we've captured here in the forecast is basically, this is how much it's going to cost for you to continue doing what you're doing now. Your existing practices. So if you want to add more, which is basically increasing your service level. If you want, you know, to renew the base or if you need to renew the base, that's something that's not captured in the current. Service level that we've defined.
If I can add something, Mr. Mayor. Two things, one is some of the surface work that's probably going on may include some spot repairs to the base also. So you're probably doing some of that. And then secondly, with respect to, if you want to start looking at the base as part of the asset to be renewed. That could be part of the twenty twenty five update in terms of future level service and the funding to make that happen.
Okay. No, thank you. I mean, it looks like this is very comprehensive data. I just want to make sure that when we're, when it gets to decision time, we understand what the limitations are as well. Anybody have any other questions? Looks like a pretty quiet crowd. Anybody have questions?
Oh, I'm good. Just a lot of information to take in, so.
Mary Lennox, I don't have a question, but I was going to maybe make a comment before you moved on, if that's, that's okay.
Sure.
I, I, I think Elaine at the beginning of her portion did a, a really good job talking about, you know, where we are in our asset management journey. Which has been going on since twenty thirteen. Some of us have been here for all of it and some of us have not. But it is a journey and it is a long journey. So it's, the enthusiasm sometimes wanes, I'll admit that myself. And Rup was probably giving me too much credit earlier on in terms of being a champion around asset management. I absolutely see the value. But I also absolutely know how challenging it is for us as an organization to find the time. The resources, the energy to get us to a spot where we're getting. The outputs that we know we can get from asset management that will help support decision making, which Elaine highlighted quite well. The end game is, you know, it's, it, you know, the rainbow is out there, it's just a lot of work to get to that rainbow. And the end game is really about providing support for staff and for council while we're making decisions at budget time about why. We're renewing side road seven west as opposed to side road six west, because we've got all of the data. We have all the maintenance programs that we've done. We've spent X amount of dollars here and this is why we need to renew it. It, it paints that picture so that we're not relying solely on. Well, we drove over it today and it was in rough shape, so we better fix that one. Or, well, we've been getting a lot of calls from Joe about that stretch of roads, we better fix that one. This allows us to, to take a more proactive approach and a more systematic. And data-driven approach to budgeting, which a- again, as Rup says, it pays dividends from. An overall financial standpoint, but it's intimidating as hell when we look at the numbers right now in terms of renewal. And it is intimidating to know that there's more work to get to the rainbow. But we've invested a lot already. Adam has been a great champion of this from our staff standpoint. But others, Corey, Matt, Dale, everybody else is being engaged and, and doing what they can. When they can find the time, because that's part of the challenge for us, is we run really thin, from an organization. And we do a great job from an operational standpoint, and that's why we're very effective. It's these other things that we need to do, we know we need to do them, it's a struggle to find time to them. So it's going to be an investment in a lot of ways for our organization to get to the rainbow. So I just want, you know, there's, there's going to be a report coming to council about utilizing some of our modernization dollars to continue along. The process. How Rup spoke to the value and the need as it relates to software, he's absolutely true, that's absolutely right. But we need someone who's going to provide the appropriate data within the software, and we don't really have that person yet. So there's, there's pieces that we need to put in place to get to the rainbow, but we will get there. And we appreciate the work that Rup and Elaine have done for, for us as an organization. Because, yeah, it is a lot of piecing together kind of a mixed bag of data and acknowledging the gaps. And fly, trying to find data to fill some of those gaps. So we appreciate the efforts that they've certainly put in for us.
Thanks, Mike. It's good for those of us who are not involved in that day-to-day struggle to be reminded of all the work that does go into it. I know in projects not of this scale that I've been involved in the past, gathering up the data is a huge challenge. And then also maintaining it going forward. So there's, we do see the results already in terms of. You know, looking at the bigger picture, but. Yeah, we've got, we've got some distance on the journey to travel yet, but at least we can see now, start to see, begin to see where we're headed. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Elaine, is that your screen that you're still sharing?
Oh, I am. Sorry, let me stop.
Oh, it's okay. It's just I can't see the faces when. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments at this point? Okay, so we do have a recommendation here that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Wellington North. Received for information, the training session materials regarding asset management. Can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Steve, seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And I guess, again, thank you, Rup and Elaine for all your efforts today and, and for sharing that information with us today.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
We'll move on to, Steve, did you have something? Okay, we'll move on to our confirming bylaw. So I'll read the recommendation that bylaw number one hundred dash twenty one. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Wellington North. At a special meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty one, be read a first, second and third time and enacted. Could I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Sherry, seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And that brings us to adjournment. Again, thank you everyone for today's efforts. Recommendation is that the special council meeting in October twentieth, twenty twenty one be adjourned at three twenty four. Like you said, an hour and a half, that's pretty close. So could I get a mover and a seconder for that? Moved by Steve, seconded by Cherry. All those in favor? Thank you. That's carried. We're officially adjourned. And again, thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Thanks, Rup, and thanks, Elaine. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
I cut my speech in half, Andy, just to make the timeline.